Hey Bert, can you hear us?
Yes Commissioner, I can hear you.
Welcome to this Board of Commissioners meeting for July 12, 2023. We typically start these meetings with a prayer reading or a thought followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have any volunteers for a prayer reading or a thought? Anybody? Brought and then after that, anyone for the Pledge of Allegiance? Rudy? Sounds great. Awesome. Thank you.
Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this time that we have set aside to discuss the business of the county. We are grateful for the opportunity it provides for decisions to be made publicly. We ask for that inspiration to be upon those who make decisions today and who make comments, that they will be inspired as to their thought processes and what they say and how they say it. We are grateful for the country we live in and grateful for those who are here. In these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Thank you gentlemen. We are going to start our meeting with recognition. We have the Employee of the Month for July.
Carrie Chaney. You stand acute. Carrie has worked as a legal assistant in Utah County Attorney's Office for 12 years. She handles the intake cases from law enforcement, the organization of case records, the filing of charges in district court and assignment of cases for prosecution. And in this role, Carrie is responsible for obtaining, organizing, filing and initiating several thousand cases a year. Can we clone you? She coordinates not only with the Attorney's Office in our office, but with each of more than 20 law enforcement agencies, the county and the staff of all nine courts of the 4th District, and has developed an excellent working relationship with each and every one of them. She is the only truly indispensable employee in the screening division. Maybe we could fire a bunch of others and maybe keep that up. She has had assignments as legal assistant with the juvenile court team, the justice court team, multiple trial court teams, and has had responsibility for expeditions and governor's warrants. She goes on, she is always going on the extra mile and the criminal justice system rarely sleeps and often requires Carrie to work on holidays due to court appearances that need immediate attention. The Utah County's office is truly fortunate to have Carrie Chaney as part of our team and as for that matter, so is the entire Utah County. So thank you very much Carrie. There's 22 others who signed on to this either separately or as part of this reading here. So thank you for everything. Can you come up and take a minute?
I just want to say thanks. I truly, truly love what I do. I love who I work with and I love working with all of the agencies and just the myriad of things that I do. I'm so thankful for you guys. You make my life a pleasure.
We will build our agenda before the work session so that people know if they need to stay or not.
That's a good idea.
Alright, do we have items that need to be held, 1 through 10? Item 7. Okay?
Yeah. And 8, I guess we should at least address which of the three agencies will...
I think this is to reduce it to three. This is to narrow it down to three, is it not?
There are three.
Do we have to pick which one of the three, Robert, on that one? We do? Okay. Alright, so we can hold 8?
Hold 10?
Hold 10, you say?
Yeah. Okay, 11 through 20? Do we need to discuss 15?
I would say...
Continue 15, two weeks? Okay. We'll continue. Item number 15 for two weeks.
15, two weeks. And 18, 19 and 20, we probably should use that as part of the whole.
You want to hold those three, I think? Okay. 18, 19 and 20? Yeah, so we do need to strike 18. Yeah. Strike 18 and then you want to hold 19 and 20? Okay. And then 21 through 30?
I'd like to take 21 through 27 as a whole.
Okay. 30 through 40?
None for me.
We're gonna jump all the way 40 to 60.
I do not have any.
I don't either.
I have none.
Okay, so we're gonna hold 61, strike 62 and 63 and hold 64. Okay Alice, you want to repeat those back to us?
Okay, I have this, sorry. I was holding item number 7, 8, 10, continuing 15 for two weeks, which I believe is the 26th, striking 18, holding 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26 and 27. Okay, and then as far as closed meetings, we're gonna hold the status 61, striking 62 and 63 and holding 64.
Yep, that is correct. Thank you Alice. Next, we'll move into our work session, presentation from the Utah Department of Transportation on the I-15 Spanish Fork interchange study.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Darren Bunker. I am a project manager over at UDOT in Region 3 in Orem. And we have just kicked off an environmental study on a new interchange in the Spanish Fork area. And so would like to just provide some information on that to you and the constituents of Utah County today. As I mentioned, we are beginning an environmental assessment study. This is part of the National Environmental Protection Agency Act, the NEPA Act. And so we'll be following the requirements of that process. Our project delivery process for this study is as follows. Previously, Spanish Fork identified a need for new access to I-15. They also went through a planning session and out of that planning session, there was a study that came out of that in 2012. That study recommended a new interchange at Center Street. Subsequently, there has been funding that was made available in this last legislative session that allocated funding to do a full-blown environmental study. And that's the phase that we're in right now, the environmental phase. During this phase, we will develop concepts. We will use that previous scoping study to kind of set the basis for what we're doing. But we're gonna go above and beyond what is actually in that report. We're gonna be looking at additional solutions that could potentially solve the purpose and need of the project. Once we get done with our environmental study, then the following steps are to take the project into design and then eventually construction. Those two phases have not been funded yet. So there's no timeframe. A lot of times we get a question, when is it gonna be built? At this point, we don't have a timeframe for that, a specific timeframe. But this project is identified in the regional transportation plan that MAG has put together. It is a Phase 1 need, but a Phase 2 funding project. What that means is that Phase 1 is like things that will happen over the next 10 years and Phase 2 is stuff that will happen over the next 20. Okay. As you can see on this map, here's our study area that we're gonna be looking at. It basically starts a little bit north of the Benjamin exit and goes kind of up to where the off-ramp is to go to Main Street in Spanish Fork, from the north and south perspectives. We're gonna extend our study area over past Main Street to the east and about a quarter of a mile to the west.
Excuse me, that's not me. That's the computer. Sorry.
That's alright. Okay. A big part of this process is stakeholder and community engagement. That's the NEPA process that I talked about before. We are just beginning that, so our current phase is the scoping phase. We just kicked off this about a month ago. We had a public hearing, a public meeting about a week and a half ago. We had about 50 people, 60 people show up to that meeting, so we consider that pretty good turnout. Had a lot of good comments. And so we will have another one of those meetings as we publish the EA. There will be another public engagement and a 30-day comment period at that time. And I forgot to mention, we're currently in a 30-day comment period that will end on July 27. All those comments that we're collecting through this formal comment period will be looked at one by one. They will be part of our published document at the end. And even though we're gathering formal comments right now, anytime the public wants to provide a comment and input, we're open to that. It's just those comments during these two specific timeframes that will actually become part of the record. But we're always open to ideas. Once we get through the scoping period, then we're gonna dive into the purpose and need of the project. Why is the project needed? Is it traffic? Is it access? Is it development? We'll identify the goals of the project and put a purpose and need together. At that point, we'll move into what we call alternative screening. We will set up some screening criteria. And those screening criteria are kind of lumped into two different things. The first area of screening would be things like, that go along with the purpose and need in terms of how well do they address the concerns of the citizens? The purpose of the project, like increasing traffic on Main Street or any kind of thing like that. And then the second group of screening criteria, going into more of the regulations, are we meeting all the specific federal requirements that the project has to conform to? That would be our second level of screening criteria. At that point, we evaluate the alternatives and select a preferred alternative. At that point, we publish the EA document, provide a 30-day comment period, and then we issue the formal decision. That formal decision, we anticipate will be issued about October of 2024. So about a year and a half from now. As you can see here, this is kind of our initial study of the level of service of various routes within the Spanish Fork area. As you can see, on the left-hand side, we have the AM peak. So most of this traffic is traveling north on Main Street. On the existing conditions is today, the one on the right is a 20-50 no build, meaning if we don't do anything in this area, then that's what it's gonna look like. Okay, so you can kind of see that it gets worse as we get to 20-50, which shouldn't be surprising to anybody. This is just another way to look at the traffic conditions. You have these slides, so I'm not gonna spend much time on this one. And on this one, I just want to point out one of the items, and that is the northbound on Main Street. If you look at the top, on the left-hand side, you've got the existing condition. In the AM, it takes about 7.3 minutes to go from Volunteer Drive to I-15. In 20-50, that will increase to 26.3 minutes if we do nothing. Now, some of these aren't that dramatic of a difference between now and 20-50. And so those are the types of things we'll look at through the study to see how that fits into our purpose and need. Okay, we do have a website. We are asking for this information to get published in whatever methods we can to our citizens in Utah County, but we have a website, u input.utah.gov/i15spanishforkstudy. You can also email us. We have a voicemail that we'll pick up and you can also mail us directly through snail mail. This does have a QR code on it, so people can use their phones to get to this information as well. As I mentioned, we're in the middle of our comment period. There are specific things we're asking for. We're looking for input on what the transportation needs are. That would include all users, bikes, pedestrians, anybody that would be impacted by a project in this area. We're looking for input on the screening criteria itself. How do we select a project? What things are important to consider in that project selection or in that solution selection? We're looking for impacts to the community that we need to be aware of and the natural environment and any other significant issues. I might mention, we also have what we call a stakeholder working group. It's comprised of about 20 people. We're gonna actually be holding the first one of those meetings tonight. We've tried to pick out different representatives from the community. You know, people who own farmland, people who own businesses, minority communities. So we've tried to get a cross-section of the community involved in this. So it'll be a little bit more intimate setting than a big public meeting. And so we'll be meeting with them tonight and then a couple more times throughout the project and have them help us reach out to the community in their respective areas. Okay?
Both of my fellow Commissioners live in Spanish Fork. I mean, I think you both have quite a vested interest in this.
Well, I think it's probably important to note, as a city, Spanish Fork was really thinking ahead and worked with some business owners to relocate. Am I incorrect in saying that?
No, you're absolutely right and we have to express gratitude for the work that Spanish Fork has done. Where, in the area where the interchange will go, there is a significant business that actually is on a railroad spur. And if you've ever worked with projects related to railroads, that's a difficult situation. Spanish Fork went all the way through the whole effort of helping to relocate that business and get a new spur built so that the existing spur can be abandoned when the time comes.
The way I was told, it's, you know, oftentimes we're so reactive, right? And so having to go and then say, "We're doing this and we want to purchase some land." I think it saved us quite a bit of money. At least that's my opinion. Would you?
I would agree.
Agree to that? Yeah?
Yep.
That's good.
We appreciate all the work that they've done.
Yeah, that's good.
So with that being said, sometimes when people go through all that effort, they come up with an idea, it's a great idea, but then we gotta go through the NEPA process. So like I say, we appreciate what they've done, but we have to look at all alternatives. And I would just say that it could be, it's a good thing because there may be input from the community and different thoughts that come out that may even provide a better solution than what was provided in the original scoping report. We won't do anything that's worse than that, right? We won't make the situation have a negative impact on the community. So we just want everybody to know that we're looking at all the alternatives, so.
Right. Thank you for that.
You did a very good job on the City Council in Spanish Fork.
I didn't say that. I don't think it's...
That's what I thought. I thought I recognized you.
I don't think it hurt to have the former Region 3 Director as a council member either.
Probably not, but I just wanted to reaffirm that you did well there. You're doing well here too.
Councilman Marshall is a lot smarter than me when it comes to roads. I just helped build them.
I've taken more than my time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Alright. Moving on, we'll go to our first agenda item, item number 7. How are you doing Rudy?
I'm doing great.
I had some thoughts- -on this CIP.
I just wanted to say, was it Mark Twain that says, you know, that the reports of my demise were very premature? You know, I am back, so I am back, and it's great to be back.
Well, you were missed. We are excited to have you back. So... We're here to adopt a CIP, right? So I have, I have some notes on my paper, but I think y'all did a pretty good job, but I don't necessarily agree with all of it. So I'm going to propose, I know this is, it'll go faster than it sounds, but I think if we just kind of go line item by line item and see if any of us disagree. So under admin building, I was okay with everything there, so I'm good with that whole section. Any objections from either of you?
No, I'm good with that.
I didn't have any there either.
Okay. So we're good with the updates for admin section?
Yes.
Obviously, there was nothing for CJC. I was good with everything on convention center.
And I'll point out, on the schedule I gave you, we have a little scorecard up in the top left that I'm showing on the screen there, but we have a total of $12.2 million of ARPA funding available for any per, so if we use it up CIP, then it won't be there. I just wanted to make sure we understand as we go along in here, and any changes, we'll update this.
I, that's fantastic. That's numbers that I've been looking for for weeks.
Hey, Rudy, and on that ARPA number, so where it says ARPA funding for that first line, does that, that does not, that $12,259,000, that's after the ARPA is accounted for in this chart here, right?
Yeah, and I will be clear about one other point. In the original schedule that you saw, decisions were made on our end, I guess, to increase the ARPA amount to what the requested was. I have rolled it back to where it was on the approved CIP that we approved last year. So this is 12 million in addition to what was, has already been approved, so nothing is assumed in this schedule here.
Okay, I was good with convention center. Countywide, I was good with that. Which one is the?
I'm good with those two sections.
Okay. Both of the countywide, I was good with.
Historic Courthouse, I think we have some conversation on.
Yeah, I, so all the way down to Historic Courthouse, I'm going to vote no on both of those projects, or the Historic Courthouse. I think we need a comprehensive plan for that Historic Courthouse. I think we've used enough duct tape, fishing twine, and baling wire.
Speaking with Glenn this morning, it was an aha moment for me as well. It was like, we can keep throwing money at it, or we can really get a plan that then, like, really gives us an overall remodel, you know? Similar to the old Thurber School in Spanish Fork, not to use another example from Spanish Fork, but, you know, we were in a similar aged building, it's just-
Bringing young academy.
Yeah, you can just keep throwing money at it rather than having a real identified plan, like they do at the state capitol. So that's, I think I align up with you on that as well, if that-
Okay, so I'm going to strike those, I would strike everything under Historic Courthouse.
So the HVAC and-
Line 7510.
Yep, and so both the HVAC and the elevator.
Now, to be, just a little bit of clarification, that line, the line 7510, I don't believe should be in the CIP to begin with, because that's really the ongoing maintenance of the building that we're putting into their $600,000, so I'm totally on board with that, so we just take all of that out.
Yep.
That's good. Okay, perfect.
And if we do a comprehensive, we don't have to put a restrictive fund in the CIP to meet that in time.
Right. Okay.
We know we're not tearing the building down, right? It's, we're not going to raise it. It's historic landmark. We just got to decide really what we, what we want to do with it, rather than just keep putting Band-Aids on it.
Yep. I agree, and those are kind of, $3 million worth of Band-Aids is a lot of Band-Aids. I think it's better to have a comprehensive plan if we're going to start spending money with six zeros. Okay, Health and Justice Building, the next two, I was good with both of those.
Change from, yeah. So that was, and I'm reading this correctly, this is 215,000 less than what we were projecting, Rudy?
Yeah. That is correct.
I'm good with that.
North County, I was good with.
Now, that North County number includes that item that's on the agenda for today. Just be clear.
Okay. Under Security Center, I was going to say, my, my paper and your paper are slightly different, so I'm going to maybe compare these as I, as I go through line by, line by line on this.
We could do it by project number or the-
Yeah, use a lineup, because that's easier to spot on this chart.
Yeah. Okay, the air handler units, the first two, I was good with. The next one, the roof for the North Annex Building, I'm good with. The SEFA upgrades, I'm good with. Security Center fencing, I'm good with. The-
And that security fence, we've already begun.
Yep. In fact, it's progressing nicely. Yeah, you've got-
Yeah, there's-
There's some stuff that's missing.
Don't have patrol remodel on yours.
They're collapsed, so.
Oh.
And I'm sorry for this, we've had several hands in the pie here, and the patrol remodel is on here for, it was originally approved at 2.75 million, and it's on here for 5.2 million is the new requested amount.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it on here. So that one, I was going to-
But it is on your screen.
Yeah.
In case you need a reference.
Yeah. Great, so I have two pieces of paper and a screen that all say different things. Does anybody else see an issue with this?
The big paper I gave you, should say, or maybe it printed out.
No, the big paper does not.
It's got it collapsed still, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the paper, we just don't have 7538.
Man, I love the CIP. It is just my favorite, and I absolutely love the fact that I've been working on this for two weeks, and I have two pieces of paper and a screen that say different things. Not confusing at all.
Not at all.
Right? So we're all on the same page here?
We are on the same page here.
All right, okay, we're going to look at your screen then. You good?
That's the most complete one.
We'll look at the screen and my paper and see if we can figure it out between the two of these. All right, okay, so air handlers, I was good with, fire alarm upgrade, I was good with, North Annex Building roof.
Yes.
Service road, I'm fine with, SEFA upgrades, I was good with, the roof, is that on here? That one, yep, and it doesn't have a, I'm not sure that one's on this paper either.
My original, over here, it's not.
Oh, it is, I see it right here. Yep, there was just no, okay, so yep, I was good with that one. Security Center fencing, yes. Okay, so under patrol remodel, I think we originally have that approved under ARPA, and my vote would be that we take that off of ARPA and push that back to about 2030, and then we can reconsider it with the other CIP needs for the county.
Yeah, because I've been watching the changes in numbers, and it's, inflation's hit us hard, materials has hit us hard, contracts were delayed, we didn't know where we were until the last couple, few months.
So do either of you have a problem with that?
No, I'd rather hold off on that.
What are the, well, just curious what ramifications are, maybe?
The only reason I said to push it off that far is just so that we can discuss it, so that it's after the 2026, but that doesn't mean we couldn't move it back forward, once we figure out how much money we have. Because I want to put the priority towards the jail medical, because that was your guys' number-one priority, right?
Yeah, 2030 may still be further out than necessary, but we'll know that, we'll have a better picture.
I think we're going to do it sooner than that. I was just trying to push it past the 26, 27 threshold for the funding, because once we know how much money we have, then I think we sit down and discuss when we can put it on the plan.
Okay.
Right? So I just threw that number out there. We could put it in, you know, 2027. I'm just trying to get it past that funding year so that we can figure out how much money we have for the priority projects.
What, if any, challenges, Sheriff, do you see with something like that? Is that a fair question to ask you, put you on the spot?
And these numbers are fairly new, and I've never got a chance to come and talk to you about it ahead of time, so I apologize for that.
No, we, we understand the money is where the money is, right? So it'll put us in a crunch, it really will. I mean, the patrol, they're already kind of busting at the seams, and as we go, so we expand through the years, it's just going to crunch us really hard, but.
I know one of the ideas that Commissioner Gardner had thrown out was splitting the area and saying maybe there was something north Utah County and-
Yeah, because we're getting ready to do a whole, we're going to study, well, we just, on our agenda, just approved a purchase of, of land in Eagle Mountain. We own land in Saratoga Springs, and I want to talk to you about your needs up north and see if that changes the patrol scope at all. And those are the questions that I want to have to say, hey, would it help you if we put some facilities up there as we get more and more population out there and more activity out there, and, if that makes sense?
That's really fresh.
Really fresh, so you don't have to answer right now, but it's just as we're looking at priorities. I know that jail medical is number one for me personally, you've told me that's number one for you as well. I want to make sure we have enough money for that and everything else. I know there's needs.
Yep.
But I think we just can discuss maybe what we can get away with.
Yeah. Fair enough. I would just say, I guess off the top of my hand with that comment, I would prefer to keep everything centralized at the sheriff's office for now, as far as the office spaces and the way we proposed, but I'm definitely willing to look at it and see what makes sense, but right now, those, I don't know that the satellite stations make sense, and I don't know that they'd be a cheaper way to go either.
No, and it would be more, we'd be looking more five to 10 years out as the population grows, so we'd want to look at population modeling, where are people going to be, what are your needs going to be in five and 10 years, that sort of thing.
And you somewhat have satellite where you have such coverage in Eagle Mountain, if you will.
Yeah, we do.
So that's, okay, thanks for helping with that.
Thanks, Sheriff. Okay, so-
Jail medical.
Me neither.
Jail medical, I'm good, leaving where it is.
Yeah, because that, if we have to, we have that 5.2 for patrol remodel that could be applied.
And the, the mental health is kind of going in with that, right? Those are going together.
And one question is, if there's something that you want to fund an additional amount from ARPA funding, such as that particular one, because right now, we have about, the ARPA funding amount is 5.1 million, and the total bill is about 20 million, so.
Yeah, I think part of that's going to end up being CIP.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it will be.
Yeah, and I feel okay with that. I mean, that's, that's general fund monies, that's, I mean, yeah, my guess is half of that ends up coming out of ARPA and half ends up coming out of CIP, just spitball, but that's what I would think.
But as we move forward with that concept, we have to keep in mind that the end of '24 is rapidly approaching, it has to be obligated between now and then.
Right, and so as soon as we have any, yeah, so the way I look at it is, any other money we don't spend, the rest of that ARPA will be jail medical.
Perhaps what we might do is go through this and see what we have left over at the end, and then we can go back if you want to and-
It's a great idea.
Make an adjustment.
Yep, I like that idea. I'm good with that.
And on these projects, do we have the final, final, final engineering scoped out on these projects?
A lot of them.
We do, okay.
These we'll bid out.
Okay. I'm good with the emergency management building.
What line is that? I don't see that.
That's 74, 7540. It says PPE building.
The PPE, okay, yeah, EMB, right.
Yep.
We should start calling it EMB. Yeah, that's necessary.
And I would say yes on the new proposed practice. Is that going to change our, you want to, does that change our ARPA number there?
That's the question. There's a couple of them that way, and maybe perhaps what I'm, like I said, we could go back and we could revisit how much we want at, when we're done with this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Water heater is flooring.
Yeah. Wildland fire, tentatively, we're okay with. I think we're going to, on the contract, we'll discuss the contract, but I think leaving it in the, just like patrol remodel, leaving it in the plan, I'm okay with.
Do we want to shift that out, or do we want to leave it into the three-year plan?
Don't know. Should we, Sheriff, would you prefer we shift that out as well and then discuss it when we discuss patrol on priorities for the wildland fire? We know it's needed, so we can leave it in the plan, but, okay, you do the same thing we're doing with patrol remodel, and then we'll discuss priorities?
Yes, yeah, it is.
Once we know how much money we have? Okay.
Yeah, the more we can discuss it, the better, because, you know, the date of '23 is a little scary to think of this position we'll be in if it gets pushed out that far, but.
Good point.
Yeah. Okay. Evidence remodel, I'm good. What's the funding source on the pontoon SAR boat?
That's coming out of CIP funding, and that's already been ordered.
And it's already been ordered, okay, so that's, that's why, it's not new, it's existing, okay. Flooring, I was good with, elevators and water heater, I'm good with, okay, that whole section, we're good.
That bomb robot makes perfect sense.
But that needs to be moved to the equipment replacement fund.
Right, I was going to say, that doesn't belong in the CIP, right? Because that's, to help, that'll replace the dog that we, yeah, it goes to equipment replacement?
Yep.
Okay? So.
That's where that will go, so.
All right, next, Spanish Fork.
I'd like to ask the Public Works, on that upgrade of Spanish Fork Fuel Site, eight pumps, how old are those pumps and controllers?
32 years old.
Don't tell me that.
They really are. That's why, you're talking about the underground tanks, right?
Yeah, so the Spanish Fork Fuel Site upgrades is tied to the Provo Fuel Site decommission, because we have the oldest site.
Right.
But in order to do what we want to do, we've got to upgrade the Spanish Fork to accommodate the big trucks, so that's what's going on here, is we're trying to improve it so that we can accommodate all uses at the Spanish Fork site, so we can decommission the Provo site, so you can't have one without the other type thing.
The Spanish Fork is not 30 odd years old?
No, the Provo was.
It could, it could be, you know what, it could probably be that old at this point.
That's why I'm saying, don't tell me that, I don't want to hear that.
Yeah, it, I mean, it was probably, it's probably 30 years old, pushing 30, probably 25 years at this point.
I love using fuel tanks that are put in the ground when I was in elementary school. Right? Okay. Anyway, so I'm good with line one, line two, line three, line four.
Five.
Yep.
Election processing facility?
No, so these ones, what is, we don't have funding on them right now, right? We don't have a timeline or a funding on any of these.
So the election processing facility was included in the original adopted CIP?
Right, and so, but I think we wanted to push it, the timeline on this back.
Because we don't have a timeline on this one. Originally, we were trying to push for '24 election, which isn't going to happen.
Yeah, let's say we don't have time for that, that's not going to happen, and the same with the new Public Works facilities. We had discussed pushing all of those back, right?
Correct.
Glenn, there was a generator we discussed this morning. Did that get taken care of in one of them?
Is that the one at the jail?
Yeah, the generator discussion would be, come up with a contract that we strike. In that contract for patrol was also the upgrade of the generator tied to the security center. With medical, if you do that, we need to upgrade the generator to handle everything that's going to occur, and it's about a $400,000 item that needs to be addressed, so.
So we would expect that to end up being in the jail medical?
Yeah, we'd have to do something there, yep.
Thanks, Glenn.
I'm okay with, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, as long as on the Spanish Fork facility that we push, all of those- Okay, a, as long as on the Spanish Fork facility that we push all of those, other than the fuel the fuel sites and the equipment the salt facility and the fuel sites, as long as
The salt?
and the, well, and the equipment storage, the equipment storage, I think, what's the year you were asking for on that? Sorry, Glenn, you should sit closer.
Or at least wear my watch, so I can get credit for the steps.
All right. Um, it, so, so the way I look at it is, we definitely need to do the salt storage, the fuel site needs to be done.
Right.
But this, the equipment storage probably needs to be tied to the Public Works facility, so if we're gonna kick it back, I would say we tie it all together.
Okay, do we have a, does the CIP include a year for any of those?
I think we were kind of doing the same thing, moving it to the twenty thirty, to have the discussion when it would be appropriate to, to look at it, so.
I'd be okay, I'm okay with that.
Glenn, we have the land for the public facility, Public Works facility down the road.
We, we actually purchased it and we do own it, and the salt storage is planned to go on it, so that building is planned to go there, yes.
The land part we own.
Yeah, and the fuels
Yep.
and the fuel storage and the fuel tanks.
There was discussion about a potential swap with an interested per, party. Is that still in motion by any chance?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see us swapping any land there at this point.
Not, not the land, but, um, ownership of the current facility.
Oh, the current facility, of him purchasing, we did get an appraisal on the existing Public Works facility. Uh, we have had some discussions, but, uh, I don't want to be without a home, so we've kind of, we're waiting right there.
Lots of tarfs.
Yeah, lots of tarfs.
Thanks, Glenn.
Yep.
We can put you out of pole barns, we can put a whole bunch of pole barns up.
So again, in the Spanish Fork line one, we're good with, two, we're good with, three, we're good with.
Four.
Four.
Yep.
And.
And then after four, all of those, the next items all would go to, you know, pushing them back.
To twenty, we don't have a date on those.
We don't, that's why I have a date, that would be beyond the funding.
R twenty dot sixty-one and twenty-two dot zero four.
Beyond the twenty-three to twenty-five funding.
Push that out, okay.
Yep. Okay.
I agree with that.
I'm good with those changes.
So with those adjustments, we have reduced the amount of burden on the CIP funds, so there actually is some funding available for some of these things, and there's also a total of sixteen million of ARPA money now available.
If we went down to the, um, jail medical and put half in ARPA funding and half in CIP, what would the, what would those numbers look like?
Let me get there, so, so if we
I would say like put eleven in ARPA and ten in CIP.
So if we put, let me get to the right line, there we go. So if we did that, that still leaves you with about, uh,
Ten in ARPA.
in ARPA available.
Sixteen in CIP.
Wait, CIP, did it just go up?
Be, because we're shifting it from the CIP bucket to the ARPA bucket.
Okay.
So we've shifted those.
Okay.
So again, that's after all expenses, everything that we've approved in the past, on this current list here, we have a little over ten for ARPA, and just, uh,
Sixteen.
sixteen on CIP, correct?
Correct.
And we're not touching any of the general fund.
No, but keep in mind, these numbers are gonna still have to change a little bit, so we still have, uh, the, like, wildland fire was a, what was our estimate on that one again? It was two?
Two.
Two point eight, maybe? Two five, two eight?
Let me just delete it, what is it?
Two five. So, keep in mind, that would put like two five out of there.
Yeah, we could put it we, we had, I think it was two point five million project estimate, and we had one million approved in ARPA originally.
We shift another five? Then, we shift another five, and it's a little bit less than we would need for wildland.
Thing about the, the jail medical, it's a, it's a loud knocking door, because it's, there's a demand on it, obviously, it's very large.
Well, yeah, not only that, but it's like the worst working conditions in the world.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, yeah, I'm just, I'm, what I'm looking at right now is just the ten the ten-five roughly in ARPA, knowing that we're gonna have more come up.
Yep.
If we reserve four million for other ARPA purposes, like non-CIP ARPA purposes, we could throw another six potentially at the jail medical.
And we do have that sitting ARPA request on our table, on our desk right now, too. And that would help offset future issues with security.
I just trying to think, I'd feel comfortable easily putting in another four, so that instead of eleven, it was fifteen, fifteen thousand from ARPA on that one.
Rudy, can you adjust the columns a little bit, because they're getting those pound symbols across, I can't read that.
What's that?
Adjust the width of the columns, because they're
Oh.
They're general taxes and ARPA funding, he won't see the top lines. And then that leaves
And the adopted CIP one two.
Do you want to do something with wildland fire?
Right, well, and that, I think that would leave enough in ARPA for wildland fire, plus the requests that are sitting on our desk, pretty close.
Yeah.
We might have to pull a little bit out of CIP for wildland fire if we do that, but I'm okay with that.
Rudy, wouldn't you do the same for column MP?
Yeah, I, I see where you're going, like item R twenty dash
Thank you.
dot eighty-two, what does that say to you on yours?
Where are we looking from?
So for wildland, wildland fire building yeah, it was about two
There we go.
What, what's that project name on yours?
Oh. Twenty dash eighty-two, it just says roof. On mine, it just says roof.
Roof E.
And that's to redo the memory. I knew about it yesterday.
No, I don't think so.
Right here, it just says roof, right there.
I see, okay. Here, it says E.
Yeah. Consistency.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay, I feel comfortable with where that's at.
So are we gonna add wildland fire back in, or no?
I would say the price-wise, yes, like, put it in the ARPA funding, but we don't have a bid on it yet, just so that we reserve at least that much money that could be used for for that, for ARPA purposes.
So do we want to keep it at the one million, then one million that we originally thought?
I would go with two point five.
Two point five?
Yeah. See, that's
The building's gonna cost at least that.
Right, so that tells us exactly
Okay, so we'll throw it in there. That leaves just under four million.
It's awfully, yeah.
Forty thousand.
Yeah, right.
Three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So I think that's pretty darn close. Okay.
If we adjust that two point five to, um, maybe one point five out of the ARPA and, uh, the other million left in the CIP for potential needs. It's not part of this charge, it's a separate, um, request. Because we have four million left over of all ARPA funds this way.
Right, and I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with other requests that we have sitting.
I'm, I'm, I only focused with one of those requests, and it's three point six, and so I feel pretty good.
I am too.
So that we've got three points, we've got one, three point six there, so I'm good.
Just in case there's something we didn't think about.
Yeah, that's okay, I'm okay with that, if you'd rather do two point, one point five for
For wildland fire?
Wildland fire, two, because another half a million.
Yeah, even if you wildland fire at two, and then
Million dollar.
Yeah.
Does that, does that help?
That's a little bit higher.
So if you put it at two million, then it's up to four and a half million.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's good, right in the middle, I'm good with that.
Okay.
A good compromise?
Yeah, if that helps you, yeah, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
Thank you. There's always something that comes up.
And, and once again, we're approving the projects, we're not approving contracts, we're not approving budgets.
That's next.
We're approving the projects, right?
Yes.
So, at the end of the day, then, what this would do, it was, would increase the total proposed amended CIP from, actually, this isn't too bad at all, from eighty-two point five million to eighty-five point three million, of course, that's because we took out the Public Works facility that was in there previously. So, and so then the ARPA funding would be four point five million remaining, and we would have some excess capacity available in the CIP fund for some of the other things we need.
More Spanish Fork facilities, sheriff's needs, other, other county needs, yeah, I think, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Now that we did all of that, we have to, of course, align this with what we just discussed.
Yeah, that's exactly.
That's what we'll do next, all right.
Yep.
Uh, so a motion to approve with the amended changes, is that good enough?
That sounds great. Do I have a second? Second?
I, yes, I second, I just want to make sure that we're, we're in line with each of these items here, so.
Do you want Rudy to review it for us?
Yeah, we'll
Let's start.
Well, we'll
Changes where?
We'll, we'll adjust as we approve and disapprove these, we'll do that after we, after this.
And the other thing, as soon as we're done here, I will send you over the adjusted, so that we can, you can look it over, and if there's any corrections we need to fix, you know, if there was something that was incorrect that put on here or whatever, then we can
And so we publish to the public that the numbers will adjust to reflect what we did today.
We will vote that way.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it, okay, I'm happy to second.
Okay, got a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero.
And I should have, I made a mistake when I asked that we held, hold twenty-seven, um, I'm good with that, my, I had blended that with all the other projects.
We'll get there.
We'll get there, it'll be fine. Okay, I, item number seven passes, we are on item number eight. Robert?
Uh, this was the RFP for the Bridleville Falls Park Design Build. The uh, the committee, the, their top three recommendations, it was, uh, Horox Engineers with SNL Inc. Number two was CRSA with the Will Group, and number three was Strong Excavation with Hogan and Associates Construction.
I'm happy with number one.
I'm happy with number one as well.
Second?
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Proceed negotiations. Number ten, oh wait, that's you as well.
And, uh, this one is for the, uh, automated identity verification, uh, in marriage licenses. Top three there, uh, the, number one was unanimous choice on the, by the committee, it's ideology with, uh, expect ID. Uh, number two is regular forensics, and number three was ideology assure ID.
I have no problem with the committee's choice.
Same, I'll make that motion.
I, I can second that motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero. We're good. All right, we are on to number, number eighteen, we, was a strike, right?
Yeah.
Okay, number nineteen is the jail medical, mental and dental facilities. Hey Glenn, how are you?
Okay.
After extensive conversations and speaking to several different companies, I am to the point that I actually feel much better about this one.
Good. I'm, I'm in a good spot with this one, I don't have any further questions.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
I can second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's three zero. Okay, item number twenty, electrical upgrades for the county administration building, I'm good.
Yep, that's good there as well.
I'll second that motion.
All right, move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's three zero. Next is what is it, VAV? V A V, just wondering, is that part of the HVAC?
HVAC, yep. Uh, so number twenty-one is dealing with the air handlers, the cooling tower, uh, that's just the, I'll, I'll say the bigger components of the HVAC system for the admin building.
I'm good with twenty-one and twenty-two.
It's kind of, gotta happen.
Motion to approve twenty-one and twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero, okay, on twenty-three, this is one that I think we should not do, that we took out of the CIP. So I would entertain a motion to strike, item number twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to so strike.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero, that motion is stricken, is that the correct word?
Yeah, I think so, we'll go with it.
Uh, twenty-four is the emergency management building, we were good with that and approved it in the CIP.
Yep.
So a motion?
Motion?
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero, okay, number twenty-five is the salt storage building. We approved that in the CIP.
Good, motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero, okay, now we are to the wildland fire facility. I would prefer we strike this one and reconsider the, at least rebid, at the very minimum.
We appropriated some funds, right?
Yep.
You felt comfortable with that, and spoke.
Yep.
Rebid.
So, motion to, to strike, but also to rebid.
Yeah. Okay. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes three zero, and number twenty-seven, we had no issue with, so motion to approve. Anybody?
So move.
So move.
All right, motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes three zero.
Okay, come on, I, I just noticed that the dollar amount in number twenty-five is slightly higher than the amount that we were given in the CIP schedule, so
I think you should adjust the CIP schedule then.
We can adjust the CIP schedule, but I wanted to have direction to do so.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I think with that motion, we'll call that approved to adjust the CIP.
Yep.
Okay. It's been quite a few weeks getting through that.
Yeah, thank you, Public Works guys and everybody else.
And Auditor's Office and Public Works and Public Safety and everybody involved getting us through that.
Lot of behind the scenes work, and thank you, thank you.
Um, okay, that is the end of our regular agenda, that brings us to closed items, do we have any public comment before we go into closed session? Any online, Alice? Okay, we'll go into closed session, thank you.
Thank you, everyone that's put to work in all of this.